Good evening. Welcome to the combined work session and regular in-person and virtual meeting for April 5th, 2022. The first item on the work session agenda is the pledge of allegiance by the Primus Elementary School students, Daniel Sande and Taylor Hoback.
Taylor couldn't make it tonight. She has softball practice. Uh, Dan- yes. Dan- Daniel and Taylor are going to be our student administrators, so we had them come up.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for leading that, young man. The second item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Primus Elementary School Principal, Mr. William Rogers, titled Kindness and Citizenship.
Good evening, Upper Darby community, school board. Dr. McGary, thank you for allowing me to share tonight and put Primus under the spotlight. Uh, in preparation for speaking tonight, I took a look back at last year's presentation, and ironically, this is what I had to say. This past year has been difficult for all of us, and there's no way to sugarcoat it. We have all had to endure personal and professional challenges, and these challenges have taught us so much. The one lesson that rings clearest through all of this is that we are stronger when we work together. This message continues to ring true again this year for so many of the same reasons. The biggest difference this year is that now we are working to heal and to overcome the damage that the pandemic has caused. Through our equity team, uh, restorative practices, staff feedback, and our behavioral data, we noticed that the most pressing consequence of the pandemic was the loss of social opportunities and interactions. So our team went to work and designed a plan to combat these challenges. As we typically do as educators, we tried to come up with a new and unique way of addressing and catching up on lost time. When we finally stopped, uh, trying to reinvent the wheel, we realized that the solution was very simple in this. The solution is kindness. It doesn't cost anything to be kind to one another. So as you'll see in this video that Jason did a wonderful job with, thank you, Jason, uh, that we have been very busy at Primus, providing our students and staff various opportunities to be kind and experience the inherent intrinsic rewards as a byproduct. I hope you enjoy.
So the beginning of the school year, the kids, they just didn't know how to interact with each other. They missed almost two years of social interactions with each other every day from not being in person in school.
Kids don't really pay attention to being kind anymore, and they just aren't like that much.
People were hearing about how people weren't being kind to one another. The school decided kind of like to do something about it.
Primus as a whole is just always focused on kindness, and we're just making a more structured effort to promote how important it is, um, to be kind to yourself and to others.
We're always doing kind things and looking at ways to get the kids engaged in kind activities and how to treat other people kindly.
I've always been interested in teaching youth how to be kind to themselves so that they can be kind to others.
So they made this kindness club.
It was an opportunity to invite every child at their lunch recess to come in, and we do different activities.
We talk about why it's so important to be kind and what we can do to be kinder.
We make posters and like we just hang out and have fun.
Basically, that's it, just to like help show awareness, to be kind to one another.
They just want to be part of something. They want to be part of the bigger collective, and practicing kindness is one of the best ways to do it.
This year, since we were back in school, we decided that the cereal box Domino challenge, that would be a really nice kickoff for being kind. The kids were just so excited, especially when we started piling up the boxes. They would just keep going by, go, oh, my gosh, we got more, we got more.
We set it up outside on the blacktop.
I remember going outside and they were just like piling them up in Domino's, trying to knock them down.
All the teachers were really stressed out about it, especially my teacher. She was like, oh, oh, my God, it's gonna fall. It's too spaced out. Move this together.
We're gonna count backwards from three, and Dante's gonna start it off. Ready? Three!
I honestly thought like it was gonna stop. I was like, I was the whole time watching.
A whole bunch of the kids started to yell, and they were screaming and laughing.
It was a crazy day that day. The fifth grade did have to stay back after all the grades went in, and we did have to collect everything.
And then all those boxes got donated to a charity.
So we were able to begin the school year together as a school and have that excitement back.
It was exciting, and I was really happy to be part of it.
In my fourth grade classroom, I started to hear Ukraine becoming a buzzword. Kids were seeing things on TikTok, YouTube, the news, and they started to discuss what we could do to help out. I actually was able to find a local Ukrainian church that was like right around the corner that was accepting donations, and I was like, you guys up for it? Like, we can put something together and see if the school wants to help out, and they were so about it.
It took a total of three days just to make the posters because we want the posters to actually look good. They draw it on the paper to put it on the box, and then after that, like we set it up, we put it up on this Massimo's cart.
And we opened it up to the whole school, and donations started flowing in.
When you enter the school, you can see this table full of food, and there's a good amount on there, so yes, I would call it a success.
It was amazing to see like how excited these kids were to be like, I have a donation! Where does it go? They were just, it was heartwarming to see how much they wanted to help out.
We're helping out, and when you help out, it's kind to other people.
We did have a huge issue with people just dumping like water bottles on the floor.
The fifth graders decided to take action and started the Primus Road's recycling program.
Royal recyclers come around at the end of the day and empty the recycling bins.
You just pick it up, dump it in yours, put it back down, and you say, have a nice day.
And when that recycling bin is full, you take it and then dump it into the big recycling bin. It helps show that we should take care of our earth and that we should take care of each other and help our earth in a very good way.
We're like proof that, um, even fifth graders can change the environment by making it better.
Before COVID all started, I had written a grant to create a mural about kindness, and so although we had to put it on hold for a little bit, I started it with my fifth grade this year.
We wrote Be the Eye and Kind.
We decided to not make it just plain, regular colors. Like, we decided to have, our school kind of likes to be unique.
So I told them, you know, I wanted to make it more about Upper Darby, more about Primus, more, you know, focused around our community here.
A whole bunch of kids decided to make designs.
The first one I did, I thought was really cool, but it wasn't this one. The K, there's a butterfly in the K, and it's just like purple and pink. And then the N is, Primus is so full of color. Everybody is full of color, so a rainbow would be perfect in that. The D is yellow and purple, the colors of Primus. That's where I got this.
I did the D. The D was like a space theme, so like you could do like Earth and Jupiter and like all those other planets.
And then I had pulled pieces from a couple of different designs together to make one cohesive mural.
Once it was time to actually paint it on the wall, she drew the outline of it, and then once we finished doing like the B's, the other classes went in and they did theirs.
I think it looks like amazing.
It reminds us every time we walk into the building to be kind.
A lot of the kids really enjoyed the different things that we've done.
We kind of lead them into these activities, but the goal is for them to, in the future, start doing things like this on their own.
It's really made an impact on how we treat each other and how we're kind to other people.
And it just shows that people aren't just taking this for granted, they are caring about this.
And when they see the impact it has, it just helps shape them into great citizens, kind humans, and constantly looking for things to give back like we do here at Primus.
Thank you for the time.
Mr. Rogers, thank you for the great work you're doing at Primus. Thank you very much. The final item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Hillcrest Elementary School Principal, Ms. Susan Campbell, titled Putting the Elementary Back into Hillcrest.
Good evening, Superintendent McGary, President Brown, members of school board, students, staff, and community members. My name is Susan Campbell, and I have the privilege of being the principal at Hillcrest Elementary School. It has been an honor to transition into this role. This year has brought so much excitement back to, at Hillcrest. As the students and staff return in full, into full, um, in-person instruction for the first time since the start of the pandemic, we recognize there were children entering a school environment for the first time. In efforts to make sure all students have a positive experience and an understanding of what elementary school offers, we have been working to promote positive school climate and culture. This has been achieved by decorating the building according to seasonal changes, adding weekly dress-up days for the students and staff to participate, creating scavenger hunts throughout the building for students to help teachers win prizes, and infusing PBIS initiatives into daily activities to encourage a positive school culture. Elementary school is the foundation of how students capture what school is all about. If we don't embrace how fun education can be at a young age and promote that through our actions, the desire for students to continue to achieve and challenge themselves becomes that much more difficult. I am fortunate to work with a staff that wears their hearts on their sleeves and those who elicit a desire for the students to continue to reach beyond the standard pencil and paper educational setup. The Hillcrest staff challenges our students daily and has been working to celebrate our students' actions and achievements in individual and on a group basis. Our Positive Behavior Intervention Support System incentives are just one way that Hillcrest captures how students represent the three Bs: being safe, being responsible, and being respectful. Typically, when one of our students is seen following one of the three Bs, they earn a ticket which is placed in a basket or a grade-level bucket outside of the main office. At the end of the week, our lead teachers pull tickets out of the buckets and announce the winners who report to the office to pick up prizes. There are also other rewards that students work to earn as they continue to be ambassadors of the positive climate and culture of our school. Please enjoy the video.
I'm excited to be back at Hillcrest from, um, the basic thing of human connections.
It just makes learning so much more fun when we have the kids in front of our faces and we're able to watch them grow.
My favorite thing about being back at Hillcrest is math because I really like math.
I like math, art, MTSS, and science. I like everything in school. Because you get to learn new things.
And we get to have specials.
I like art because I'm a really great artist and I like to draw. I really like to draw and paint, and art is drawing and painting, so that's why I love it. I also like participating in gym class. I like gym because you can do exercise.
It just gets you active.
I probably like playing dodgeball in gym. I like to be very competitive.
Phys ed was one of those places where it was very hard to make the same experience when they were at home, so when they were able to come back and again, being able to work on things such as teamwork and cooperation, it's much easier for us to be able to see our students show those types of skills.
I'm excited to be back because I can see my friends. I get to hang out with my friends. I like spending time with my friends in my classroom and my teacher. I'm excited to be back at Haircrest because I could actually go outside and have fun.
My favorite thing is actually to finally go back into the playground.
I really like in-person recess.
Slides and swings.
They sit in their desks all day. It's tough. The kids just want to be kids, and so I started bringing some music into the cafeteria just so that they can have a little bit of a release.
Every Tuesday, she put a song on, and we sing it, we know it. Listening to the music makes me feel all jumpy inside, and that feels good.
I'm excited to be back because of all the great things that we do here at Hillcrest.
Ms. Campbell's been adding a lot of fun activities to our school, and today was crazy hat day. I wear my flamingo hat in honor of Ms. Roscoe, my fourth grade teacher. She loved flamingos and the hats too, so it was so fun.
At the 100th Day of School, it was really fun. We make 100th Day crowns. We dress up as 100-year-old people, and Ms. Campbell looked really great when I saw her too.
We have a running club after school, which is great because then we can get our miles in after school.
It's an extra activity after school that you can run, and it's just really fun to be a part of.
PBIS is when you help people, you get a PBIS ticket.
You have to show respect, responsibility, and you have to be safe and kind to everyone. There are buckets with every grade.
And on Friday, they pick out a name for each grade, and if your name is called, you go up to the office and pick a prize. My favorite thing of doing Skyview is with Ms. Campbell.
Grayson earns Skyview by getting 42 thumbs a day, and we do that by being safe, respectful, and responsible.
Skyview is where you look at planets. I can find planets like Uranus and Neptune. And my favorite planet's Saturn because of the rings.
The thing I was most excited about when I came back was probably doing safeties and getting to hang out with the little kids, like the first grader and the second graders.
Being a safety means you get to help younger kids, and that makes me feel happy because I like helping kids and being part of their classroom.
I just love being back in school too.
It's good to be back.
I just love my kids. I love being here. I went to Hillcrest, so it's so exciting to be back here with the kids and excited to have everyone back together.
I love Hillcrest. Hillcrest is the best school ever. Hillcrest is the only school that I would want to go to.
Hillcrest 2022! Thumbs up!
I am proud to say that Hillcrest staff and students have continued to excel in meeting expectations since our return to school, and we look forward to Hillcrest being a great place to grow. A very special thank you goes out to Mr. Jason Taylor for putting our video together tonight. You always capture the highlights in Upper Darby School District, and I would like to thank, uh, Dr. McGary and the board for all the support this year with all the transitions I've had between, um, schools, and a special thank you to Rachel Mitchell as my board liaison. Have a good night.
Ms. Campbell, thank you for jumping right in and taking on the challenge of being Hillcrest's principal, and I keep hearing you're doing a great job, so thank you very much for that. We can give her a round of applause. Before we call tonight's meeting to order, Dr. McGary, will you please outline the public's participations procedures, please? Thank you, sir.
So obviously, we, um, have in-person meetings and virtual meetings. Sorry, let me take another sip of water here. We will call on, uh, those in the audience that are here in person to speak first. Uh, when specific reports go before the board, after the board has public comment and discussion, we will open it up to public comment from those who are in person. If you're in person, please come to the microphone, provide your name, address, and obviously the agenda item on that report that you'd like to comment on this evening. The board will take your comment into consideration, uh, before moving forward. We will call on in-person speakers first. Those who signed up for general comment, and I see we only have one person who has, will be called on first to speak at the end of the meeting for general comments. I know. I wonder what's happened. Must be all the, talking all day. I heard you, Kelly. Those who are participating virtually, there are two ways for you to participate. You can phone in a comment, uh, this evening at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Again, for tonight's meeting, it's comment only, it's not question and answer, uh, so you can provide your name, address, and the specific report that you'd like to comment on. You can also send an email to boardmeetingcomments@upadarbstd.org. Same process, please provide your name, address, and the specific report you'd like to comment on. Anyone participating virtually this evening would have, uh, had to have provided their comment prior to 7:30 for general comments and indicated in their communication, either voicemail or email, that it was a general comment and had to be provided prior to 7:30. I'm happy to, with a better voice, to provide an update as we go through tonight's, uh, meetings. Board President Brown.
Thank you. If you're capable, you can do that later on, okay? The regular in-person and virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session this evening from 5:30 PM until 7:27 PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel and litigation matters. Roll call, Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hague.
Present.
Mr. Des Neuer.
Present.
Mr. War Savage.
Present.
Mr. Neal.
Present.
Ms. Lamar Murphy.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Present, and I can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Fields.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. The agenda has been moved and seconded. Are there any amendments to offer?
There's one amendment to the personnel report that was done within the past 24 hours that needed to be made.
Okay, thank you. Will anyone move to add the described item to the agenda? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda with approved amendments have been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The minutes of the combined work session and regular meeting of March 8th, 2022 was in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The reporter to secretary, please, Director Williams.
The reporter to secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The reporter to treasurer, Director Neal.
Thank you, President Brown. The reporter to treasurer is in the hands of each board member, has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. We now have the pleasure of having the report of the student representatives, Randy Lane and Majabin Tepeter.
Thank you. The buildings of report are Stoner's Hills Elementary School, Upper Darby High School, and, um, Beverly Hills Middle School. Stoner's Hills Elementary School has been getting into gear by promoting exercise and good health through their running club. As last month was March Madness, Stoner's Hills stepped in, stepped it up a notch and participated in a basketball tournament. The players were trained by learning how to play offense and defense. Moreover, in the last couple weeks, Stoner's Hills' amazing counselors took their time with the students to decide on future career paths and various jobs, which will allow students to pursue their career goals. For the older students, the counselors discussed how they could achieve their career goals through different schooling methods. As marking period three ends, Stoner's is trying their best to end this school year with a big hit. Upper Darby High School. This past weekend, Upper Darby High School's musical, The Lightning Thief, performed its first two shows, and you can catch the last two shows this weekend. Udi's Got Talent held auditions today for potential acts. The talent in our school is fantastic, so don't miss out seeing the stars in action later this month. The spring sports season is full, is in full swing with track meets and games filling up our week. Come out to support these amazing athletes. The spring open house was last Thursday, and students filled the halls with their musical talent. They were able to, they were to help guide guests throughout the building. Spirit Week has been great so far, with pajama day being yesterday and today being twin day. Make sure to wear pink tomorrow for Mean Girls Day. Spring break is starting next week, and I think I speak for all of us when I say that. Due to our hard work and the many activities this far into the school year, this break is definitely needed. Beverly Hills Middle School. Beverly Hills Middle School has had an eventful month. Eagle Eye Mobile visits the school and provides the students with eye exams and new glasses. Ms. Biagalski, the school nurse, organized this event. They also held a school-wide spelling bee. With the end of the mark, with the end of the marking period three approaching, the school had many students on the honor roll and distinguished honor roll. The school also had a speak-up event earlier this month. This ends our report for this month. Thank you for allowing us to share our thoughts with you tonight.
Thank you, ladies. You always do a great job. Let's give them a round. Yes, yep.
Thanks, President Brown. I just wanted to make a quick comment that, um, Majabin did not mention that our very own Randy Lane is in the musical, and I saw it on Saturday. It was great. Randy was awesome. And it, it really was great. I have two very picky seven-year-olds, and they absolutely loved it. My son, who won't sit through anything at intermission, was like, when is it gonna start again? When is it gonna start again? So if you don't have tickets, I really, I encourage everyone to go and, and bring the kids. It's a lot of fun.
Thank you for that, Director Hague. That's great. Randy, you was holding out on us, she didn't tell us that?
It's a good, it's a good thing Randy's wearing that mask because we can't see her blush. Um, but, uh, my wife and son saw it Friday and really enjoyed themselves and had a really good time. That, that actually musical's, my son's, it's like one of his favorites, so it was great through, to be able to see it, and, uh, they had a really good time, so thanks for that.
Sounds good. I'm trying, I'm gonna try to see it this Friday, so Randy, I'll be looking for you.
As a teacher, I know, um, a lot of students celebrate the Means Girl Day, uh, October 3rd in the movie, when it's a, that's the day that the kid asked her for a pencil or something, and it's like, or no, what date it was, and it's October 3rd.
You've seen the movie?
Of course, yes. Um, but as a teacher, I know the students, they always quote that on October 3rd, and it's a day that sometimes it's difficult to get through, but, uh, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for providing clarity on that. The budgeted personnel enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public, and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. We will now have the report of the superintendent, Dr. Dan McGary.
Good evening, Board President Brown, members of the entire board, administration, staff, members of the Upper Darby community, uh, soon-to-be hopefully new, uh, members of the administrative team that are here with your families. Thank you to Principal Bill Rogers and the Primus Elementary School team for leading us in the pledge of allegiance and for the presentation on kindness and citizenship. I also want to thank Principal Susan Campbell and her team, uh, at Hillcrest Elementary School for their presentation highlighting activities that encourage a positive school environment. And before I continue to move forward, I just want to acknowledge again, I've done it previously, but we have, you know, much more of an audience. I think it's always great when we have an audience to, to highlight the history here. But many, many years ago, when we started to talk, talk about citizenship, PBIS, trauma, uh, it was kind of frowned upon to have those conversations many, many years ago to input these programs here in the school district. I want to acknowledge Dr. Baglisi in the back of the room for his stewardship of these programs over the last several years, and Mr. Marshallak, who I think is trying to hide in the hallway, uh, because he doesn't like to be in the, in the spotlight. But Mr. Marshallak and, and Chris and, and Dr. Manfree and Mrs., uh, Ms. Kelly, um, and the principals for carrying on PBIS and trauma-informed care in the school district, it's clearly been a very positive, well-received process. It certainly wasn't an easy process to bring to the school district, but when you see all the smiling faces on our kids in our school district, compliments to all of you for, for carrying that through in the school district, and I think when we have an audience, I want to give, uh, you know, praise to those who helped steward this to where we are today. So Dr. Baglisi, thank you. And Mr. Marshallak, who's out in the hallway somewhere. Before I go through my report, I think that the most important, uh, part of the, this evening is obviously all the students that are here, those who could come out tonight with their families. So it's a tradition here in Upper Darby that during superintendent's meetings that we highlight the talents, the strengths academically, athletically, and musically of the kids and the students that attend our schools. Uh, tonight is no different. It's a, usually this time of the year, it's a long report, Board President Brown and members of the board, so I apologize, uh, not, uh, for celebrating them, but, but I'll take my time getting through it for you. So congratulations to Delaware County Intermediate Unit Scripps Spelling Bee winner, Rustinia Schumaita? I don't know if Rustinia is here tonight. Beverly Hills Middle School in recognition of receiving third place in the 2022 Delaware Middle School, in recognition of receiving third place in the 2022 Delaware County Intermediate Unit Scripps Spelling Bee. We have a lot of Science Fair winners. I don't know if they're here with us tonight. If they are, when you hear your name, if you want to come up, we'll get a picture with you. You can be recognized. So the Delaware County Science Fair winners from Upper Darby High School, good luck at the next Science Fair that's coming up. I understand it's going to be April 6th. So Emma Gray of Upper Darby High School, in recognition of earning first place in the 2022 Delaware County Science Fair. These are amazing concepts that kids are studying, in the category of medicine and health, and a special award from the PA Association of Retirees for the project titled "The Effects of COVID-19 Vaccine on Menstrual Cycles." So Emma Gray, congratulations. Taylor Emanuel Jackman of Upper Darby High School, in recognition of earning second place in the 2022 Delaware County Science Fair, in the category of chemistry for the project titled "Effect of Particle Size on Reaction Rate." So congratulations to Taylor. Zachary Finley of Upper Darby High School, in recognition of earning third place in the 2022 Delaware County Science Fair, in the category of engineering for the project titled "The Ideal Structure of a Floating City Against a Natural Disaster." That's a pretty cool concept. So congratulations. Sana Saud of Upper Darby High School, in recognition of earning third place in the 2022 Delaware County Science Fair, in the category of behavioral science for the project titled "Social Media and Personality Types." I'd like to see that report. Social media and personality types. So congratulations, Sana, to your success. Andy Liu of Upper Darby High School, in recognition of earning first place in the 2022 Delaware County Science Fair, in the category of behavioral science, and a special award from the PA Association of School Retirees for the project titled "Are Teenage Males or Females More Likely to Be Addicted to Gaming?" So congratulations. Josiah Satic of Upper Darby High School, in recognition of earning first place in the 2022 Delaware County Science Fair, in the category of chemistry, and a special award from the PA Association. Congratulations to Josiah. Luke Olmstead of Upper Darby High School, in recognition of earning second place in the 2022 Delaware County Science Fair, in the category of Earth and Space Science for the project titled "Liquification Mitigation." Say that three times fast. Abra Lascar of Upper Darby High School, in recognition of earning second place in the 2022 Delaware County Science Fair, in the category of engineering for the project titled "Effects of Wind Turbine Wake." Elise Olmstead of Upper Darby High School, in recognition of earning first place in the 2022 Delaware County Science Fair, in the category of Earth and Space Science, and special award, a special award from the Delaware County Institute of Science for the project titled "The Surface Composition of Pluto's Charon." Leila Hoak of Upper Darby High School, in recognition of earning first place in the 2022 Delaware County Science Fair, in the category of Environmental Science, and special awards from the Delaware County Intermediate Unit and the Pennsylvania Association of School Retirees for the project titled "Relationships Between Dissolved Oxygen and Fresh Water Temperature." Congratulations, Leila. Two more science winners. Alenia Swift of Upper Darby High School, in recognition of earning third place in the 2022 Delaware County Science Fair, in the category of behavioral science for the project titled "Learning Through Virtual School." And our final award winner for science is Delaney Jordan of Upper Darby High School, in recognition of earning second place in the 2022 Delaware County Science Fair, in the category of behavioral science for the project titled "Does Gender at Birth Influence Short-Term Memory?" Again, does gender at birth influence short-term memory? Congratulations. We're also very proud of this year's National Merit Scholarship Awardees. Shabab Alam of Upper Darby High School, in recognition of reaching the National Scholar finalist status in 2122. Stanley Jan of Upper Darby High School, in recognition of earning National Merit Scholar Letter of Commendation for 2122. And Sebastian Mostick of Upper Darby High School, in recognition of earning the National Merit Scholar Letter of Commendation for 2122. So three very talented, among the best in the country. So congratulations to all three. And we have close to 21 athletes, student athletes to recognize tonight. So I think there are some student athletes with us, recognize some families and some faces. So if you are here, you can feel free to come up and your families, after you get a picture with board members, we get a picture with your families and your friends. So winner, athletic competition award winners, Natty Myers of Upper Darby High School for being selected to All Central League Honorable Mention Boys Basketball for the 2122 school year. Aubrey Ennis, Upper Darby High School, for being selected to the All Central League Honorable Mention Girls Basketball for 2122 school year. Don't be shy. Stand front and center. Yep, right up here. Thank you for being here, by the way. Brock Green of Upper Darby High School for being selected to the All Central League Honorable Mention Boys Swim and Dive for the 2122 school year. Luke Olmstead, scholar and an athlete of Upper Darby High School for being selected to the All Central League Honorable Mention Boys Swim and Dive for the 2122 school year. Gabe Green of Upper Darby High School for being selected to the All Central League Second Team Boys Swim and Dive for the 2122 school year. I want to go back. I hope I didn't skip this name. If I did, I'll say it twice. But Brock Green of Upper Darby High School for being selected to All Central League Honorable Mention Boys Swim and Dive for the 2122 school year. I don't know if I missed that one or not. Connor Hunt of Upper Darby High School for being selected to the All Central League Second Team Boys Swim and Dive for the 2122 school year. Elise Olmstead of Upper Darby High School for being selected to the All Central League Honorable Mention Girls Swim and Dive for the 2122 school year. Olivia McConnell for two different reasons. First, of Upper Darby High School for being selected to the All Central League Honorable Mention Girls Swim and Dive for the 2122 school year. And she was also recognized, Olivia, out of Upper Darby High School, for being selected as the Delaware County Scholar-Athlete for the Pennsylvania Sports Hall of Fame Delco Chapter Girls Swim and Dive for the 2122 school year. Nathan O'Donnell of Upper Darby High School, in recognition of being selected as Honorable Mention in the 113-pound weight class to the All Central League Wrestling for the 2122 school year. Samuel Kimmel of Upper Darby High School, in recognition of being selected as First Team in the 132-pound weight class to the All Central League Wrestling for the 2122 school year. Julian LaVenture for two reasons. Of Upper Darby High School, he's been recognized for winning the 285-pound weight class at the District One Championship for the 2122 school year. And Julian, in recognition of winning the 285-pound weight class at the Southeast Regional Championship for the 2122 school year. Congratulations to Julian. Freddie McCray, Upper Darby High School, for being selected to the All Delco Honorable Mention Indoor Track for the 2122 school year. Dylan Rahat, Upper Darby High School, for being selected to the All Delco Honorable Mention Indoor Track for the 2122 school year. Jack Ford, Upper Darby High School, for being selected to the All Delco Honorable Mention Indoor Track for the 2122 school year. Logan Biddle, Upper Darby High School, for being selected to the All Delco Honorable Mention Indoor Track for the 2122 school year. Andre Henigan, Upper Darby High School, for being selected to the All Delco Indoor Track Honorable Mention Indoor 2122 school year. LeVar Jackson, Upper Darby High School, for being selected to the All Delco Indoor Track Second Team Indoor Track 2122 school year. Alice Etienne, Upper Darby High School, for being selected to All Delco First Team Indoor Track for the 2122 school year. And then I have, if I skip someone, let me know. Gabby Fralin, Upper Darby High School, for being select, Fralin, sorry. Fralin, sorry. Thanks for calling me out, for being selected All Delco First Team Indoor Track 2122. Yeah, coaches, come on up. And parents, if you want to jump in a quick picture, come on, come on up. It's a family affair. Yeah, all right. As we're taking some pictures, I do want to recognize all the parents and all the coaches that are involved with these students, our coaches, our parents. Thank you for what you do, and thank you to our student athletes. Later this month, our Chief Financial Officer, Craig Rogers, and I will present the proposed final budget to the board and public. Per our typical process, we will ask the board to take action on the proposed final budget in May, but we will continue to look at opportunities to reduce costs where reasonable prior to a final budget approval. As I shared last month during my report, the staffing crisis facing public education plays a vital role in the development of our budget this year. We want to be careful not to request additional, although much-needed, staffing positions, and at the same time, be in a position to not able to fill them, essentially. So we know that we need staff here in the school district, but we don't want to be in a position where we request for staffing, and there's a crisis and a staffing shortage, and we cannot fill those positions. In previous years, we have always balanced what we need with what we can afford. Now, we are adding another element: what we need, what we can afford, and whether or not there are people to hire. As Mr. Marshallack and Dr. Manfree presented last month, we are experiencing an increase in some of our special education programs, as well as our English Language Learners EL program. The district is mandated federally to provide support and services to students who receive special education services, English language services, or both. We will continue to discuss our staffing needs during our upcoming budget meetings as we look to adopt the 2223 budget, but we have to keep our eye on what we can actually staff and who we can hire. I also wanted to take a moment before I close this evening to thank the district's staff and administrative team for hosting the United States Deputy Secretary of Education, Dr. Martin, and the Pennsylvania Deputy Secretary of Education, Dr. Smith. Our visit started with a trip to Bywood Elementary School, where Principal Kristen Mann and her staff demonstrated our ongoing efforts to build trauma-informed schools. We quickly moved our way over to visit Garaford Elementary School, where Garaford Elementary School Principal, Mr. Alan Bridges, and his staff continued to highlight the meaningful educational opportunities that take place in our schools throughout the district. Alan's not here to defend himself, but the kids were keen to point out that he had a tie on and a suit jacket that day, and it was unusual for him, and he was trying to cover up with me being present, the tie and the suit jacket. So it didn't go over well. Alan, if you're paying attention, I thought I'd take that little jab here tonight. We also held a roundtable discussion with several of our Home and School Association presidents, and I want to thank those parents for coming out during the day to meet with the U.S. Deputy Secretary of Education, as well as the Pennsylvania Deputy Secretary of Education. Really a meaningful conversation that took place. After the visit, Dr. Martin referred to our district as "Stars." There are a lot of people who make this district a special place. First, when we sat out on our journey to become trauma-informed a few years ago, we had very limited funds, and I want to thank our board for having the courage to help us and figure this out. We met with our board, and we figured out a plan. The plan started with Mr. Ed Marshallack and his team. We continued to expand our work and develop a social and emotional learning curriculum. Again, our deep dive started prior to the pandemic, and is primarily led, was primarily led by Mr. Marshallack and the People's Services Team. We quickly, quickly transitioned our work on trauma to Dr. Manfree, Mr. Salerno, Ms. Christine Kelly, who worked with all of our principals and teams to establish trauma-informed teams and resources. Why am I sharing this? I want everyone to know that the amount of time and energy that goes into the running of this district and our schools is taken very seriously. It's a total team effort. There is a team of people who put in countless hours above and beyond a typical school day to provide the best that we can for the students and the schools that we serve. Our district was referred to as "A Star" or "Stars," simply because we have stars working here. Principal Mann, Principal Bridges, and the staff and students at Bywood and Garaford were and are outstanding. And I know that a visit to any one of our schools would have gone just as well. I would also like to take a moment, as you can see how she orchestrates things here this evening, to acknowledge Ms. Buford for helping coordinate the visit and for making sure that Upper Darby School District gets the positive press we deserve. In closing, we will continue to keep our focus on our students and provide them with the best opportunities we can. I look forward to our ongoing discussions as we work together to finalize our 2022-2023 budget. Board President Brown, members of the board, this concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Dr. McGary, thank you for that comprehensive report. I love it when we highlight our students academically, athletically. We are a great district, so maybe I'm biased. We will now have an update on the March 22nd, 2022 Education and People's Services Committee Meeting. Director Williams will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found in board docs.
Thank you, President Brown. Our agenda summary from March 22nd, 2022 included, first, adoption of textbooks, advanced placement literature and composition. Board action was required. Ms. Kenia presented a recommendation to approve AP and composition textbook for the 2022-2023 school year. The presentation included an overview of the review process, resources for students and teachers, and online components available with a six-year adoption. All the necessary paperwork was completed, and it's available for review in board docs. The second item was enrollment update. That was just informational. Mr. Marshallack, Dr. Manfree, and Mr. Lambert provided an update on enrollment trends in the district. The overall student population, enrollment, and specific trends in the student service area of special ed and English learners was presented. Again, that was just informational. The third item on that agenda was PSSAs, and that was informational. Ms. Kelly reviewed the general information for the state assessments, and information regarding electronic devices is outlined in the handbook for assessment coordinators. Additionally, Additionally, information regarding procedures for opting out of the test was reviewed for parents, for guardians, for students, and attested grade levels. All appropriate state assessment information has been posted to the district website, and there was no public comment on that. This concludes the summary.
Thank you very much, Director Williams. We will now have an update on the March 22, 2022 Finance and Operations Committee Meeting. Director Worsavage will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on Board Docs.
Thank you very much, President Brown. We had two agenda items on the table for that evening, both of which were informational. First one was ESER funding updates, and ESER stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. The district administration provided an update on the current spending plans for ESER-funded projects. The presentation discussed the areas of spending, funding allocations, and general status of each project category. Second item, which was also informational, was a staffing update. Dr. John Council presented an update on the district staffing. The presentation included a review of the national, state, and local impacts of the unprecedented—I want to underscore that—unprecedented shortages of qualified teachers, as well as recruitment and retention strategies to address this challenge. There were no public comments.
Thank you very much, Director Worsavage. Next, will the Instruction and Curriculum Report, Vice President, Director Fields.
The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each Board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the Board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The Personnel Report, Director Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. The Personnel Report is in the hands of each Board member and has been made available to the public. Before I move for its adoption, I just wanted to congratulate our two retirees, Mrs. Frances McElhenny and Mary Ann McSorley, and we wish you a healthy and happy retirement. Thank you for your service to the children of this district. And now, I move for the adoption of the Personnel Report escalated.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the Board? Are there any comments? Oh, sorry.
I was just going to say that it's so exciting that we're finally realizing this long-held goal of having assistant principals at our elementary schools, and I'm very excited by the really strong candidates and now, no longer candidates, but professionals that we're going to be getting, and I just wish all of them well, and I'm really excited to see what we can do with a little more help at the elementary schools.
Great segue, Director Hague. Can they—if they're here, can they stand up? Can we acknowledge them?
Come on, let's get a picture.
There we go. So I think we had a motion and a second, but not a vote, and we had a comment, so now I think it's time to—is there any other comments from the Board?
Yes, I do want to recognize—I know Mark is here, Ms. McSorley, who's been at West Perkart for a long time. We were joking around the other day that we do have some support staff in the district that have been here for such a period of time, that they're very, very supportive, that they could probably run schools in the district. And Mrs. McSorley is certainly somebody who could probably be among the best principals in the school district, and having her go is happy for her, but definitely a significant loss to the school district. Congratulations to her and her retirement. And then Fran McElhenny, who's been just an unbelievable resource in this community, who's retiring and worked her way through the organization from a teacher to a lead teacher to become an assistant principal at Drexel Hill Middle School, has become kind of the guru of handling the ins and outs of state testing. So to see Fran go, sad to see her go, but happy for her, but she's been an unbelievable resource here in the school district, too. So congratulations to Fran. Best of luck in not having to worry about state testing, which we would all like to do. So congratulations to Fran.
Are there any comments from the public?
Lee Jordan, 90 Pilgrim Lane, Drexel Hill. Good evening, School Board. I am a lifelong resident of Upper Darby, a proud graduate of Upper Darby High School, and my three children went through the school district also, and I also had the privilege of sitting on the school board for four years. This evening, I'm here to congratulate all the retirees, all our new hires, and everybody who was promoted, which there's a lot, so congratulations. However, my main reason for being here this evening is to congratulate Fran McElhenny, who unfortunately couldn't be here because of a family emergency. There are a few things that come to mind when I think about Fran. The first one is big heart. She's got a big heart, and she truly loves all the children in the school district, and you saw it every day when you're around her. The second thing is Fran's high energy and her level of professionalism. Whether I was up at that school for a school play, back-to-school night, or, you know, a book fair, Fran was always running around, helping a student, employee, or a parent, you know, navigating through the whole school system. Thirdly, was Fran's sense of community. Fran did live in the district, and so she truly understood the culture, you know, this great district that we live in and the township. One thing I wanted to mention, we know how unkind social media can be, but a couple months ago, I actually did see a post regarding Fran, and it was from a parent that was thanking Mrs. McElhenny for reaching out to her and telling her that her child had a good day. And we all know in middle school, when you get that phone call, it is worth its weight in gold, and it surely takes a special person to take the time out of the day to deliver a good message, not always the bad news. So in closing, I just want to wish Fran the best in her retirement. I'm pretty sure the next chapter of her life is going to be busier than the chapter she's in right now, and just, you know, good health and happiness moving forward. So Fran, hopefully you'll see the transcript or you're watching this, you know, where you are, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Are there any other comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please signify by—sorry. Oh, she scared me. Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried.
Congratulations.
Before we go to our next item on our agenda, I would like to recognize and give congratulations to our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, who is now Dr. Christine Kelly. Please don't tell me you were celebrating defending your dissertation and hurt your leg. No? Okay, all right, all right, okay, all right. Glad you're okay. Congratulations again. Now, back to business. The Supplies Report, Director Worsavage.
Thank you, President Brown. The Supplies Report is in the hands of each Board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the Board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. That takes us to the Facilities Report, Director Lamar Murphy.
Thank you, President Brown. The Facilities Report and the use of facilities report are in the hands of each Board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the Board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. That takes us to the Finance and Budget Report, Director Dr. Hague.
Thank you, President Brown. The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each Board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the Board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. We are now at the time for our collateral assignment reports. We will start with the Delaware County Community College, Vice President, Director Fields.
Thank you, President Brown. There were two vacancies on the Delaware County Community College Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees is like a school board, but for the community college. They meet once a month. The meetings are open to the public. The next one is April 20th at 5:30, if you want to go. We had two openings. One expired—expires in June 2023. The other one expires June 2027. We had four applicants, all of whom were very qualified, so it was a difficult decision. I want to congratulate Elizabeth Shepherd-Rabadon and Kimberly Reed. Elizabeth's term ends 2023. Kimberly Reed, her term ends in 2027. Ms. Reed has a background in admissions and enrollment at Rowan College and Arcadia University. She was formerly a school board director in Logan Township, New Jersey, so go school board directors. She has a very rich communications background. Ms. Shepherd-Rabadon has a very, very deep area university background. She's worked in administration at Temple, Jefferson, Philadelphia University, and Bryn Mar College. Congratulations to the two of them. They have a tough job ahead of them, not only the building of the new campus on the Prendy site, but they do have to appoint a new school president as Dr. Joy Gates Black is retiring. So congratulations to the newest members of the Board of Trustees. I also—all four applicants were really good. It is nice, there's fewer older men with salt-and-pepper hair on the Board and younger people, more women, and things like that. It's very nice to see.
Thank you, Vice President Fields. Before we do the IU Board Report, I wanted to just acknowledge Director Mitchell, who's under the weather and yet still being a trooper and being here for us, so thank you for that. I'll turn it over to Director Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. I appreciate that. My report's very short tonight, as the IU Board actually meets the first Wednesday of the month, so since we had an adjustment in our schedule, I don't have an actual report. But I did want to say that I did attend on March 23, the National Technical Honor Society Induction Ceremony at the IU Aston Campus, and I'm proud to report that we had two students, one who was a returning member, being like re-inducted into the National Technical Honor Society by the name of Latika Jean Lewis in the Biomedical Technology and Laboratory Sciences Program, and a student being inducted this year by the name of Zahir Azum in the Medical Careers Department. So it was a pleasure to attend and see all these students, celebrated especially a couple of our own. And you'll have to wait for the April report until May, so I'll have an April and a May report next month. Have a great night.
Thank you very much, Director Mitchell. Feel better. Legislative Council, Vice President Fields, I think you had something to report.
I want to mention locally, Senator Carney has a Senate Bill 1092. It's age-appropriate consent education. It's adding requiring consent education to—as a curriculum requirement. It's very—you know, understanding what consent is, it's very high-level and things like that, what permission is, what, you know, acceptable behavior is and things like that. But the main reason I wanted to speak was today, the PA Policy Committee held a hearing on rising property taxes in Pennsylvania and how Pennsylvania's cyber charter schools have impacted that increase. And really, I just wanted to thank a school board director from our neighboring school district, Larry Feinberg from Garreford School District. He spoke at this hearing, and it was—it was really very informing and very infuriating at the same time, and I just want to thank Mr. Feinberg for—he's really almost been reenacting the mythic Sisyphus for the last 20-some years, and I wanted to let him know that his work in this area is greatly appreciated, and that was what I wanted to add in that legislative report.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Vice President Fields. Mendehal Tyson Scholarship Committee, Vice President, Dr. Hague. I'm sorry, Dr. Hague.
We have not met yet to discuss the scholarship recipients, but I anticipate having an exciting report next month.
Thank you. Thank you. Home and School, Director Worsavage.
Thank you, President Brown. The Dan McGary Home and School Tour continues through the remainder of this month. We've been—we've been having really, really honest conversations with each other in terms of what the administration's vision—the our shared vision of a fruitful and successful school district is and how we can best capitalize on whatever opportunities exist for increased participation with home and schools with those communities. So I'm not sure if Dr. McGary would like to add anything to that.
No, I just wanted to follow up that we'll be having tentatively scheduled breakfast, coffee meeting, Dr. Manfree and I, tomorrow morning in my office with some Beverly Hills Home and School. That was a conversation that we had reached out and set up, a really good engaging conversations. We have, I think, two more, one tomorrow night. We have Hillcrest and Drexel Hill Middle School this week. Really insightful conversations and communication from parents that engage. And oftentimes in the schools—in the home and school, some of the meetings are virtual, we have a lot of students engaged, which is really cool. The hardest questions actually come from the kids at the home and school meetings, so that's really a lot of fun. Senko, I will say, Kamisha Simpson, who's moving on from Senko to Central Office, her students seem to ask the most difficult questions at home and school meetings. So they've been great, and I appreciate the Board liaisons attending. Board President Brown and Damian, thank you for attending and being a support, and Greg and the members of the administration who also attend the meeting. So it's a really good turnout. Oftentimes, the meetings are supposed to go 30 minutes. Dr. Hague's probably going to kick me right now for talking too much, but they go on longer than 30 minutes. They often—often they last over an hour, so I'll stop talking, but I appreciate it, Damian. Thank you.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, a student talked to you into a snow day, right, on one of those engagements?
That didn't go over well on social media, but it was a cute kindergarten center student that night, and we captured it and we called a snow day, but yes, they're the kind of stumpers that we get at those meetings.
You couldn't have said no. No. For PSBA, I just want to point out that Advocacy Day is coming up on April 25. Director Mitchell gave some really good information at our last month's meeting about that. That's our chance to advocate with our legislators in Harrisburg and spend a day on the Hill and talk about our underfunding. We know how we're affected by that. We know we are a fantastic district, and we do the best job with the resources that we have, but if we were fairly funded, we can do more. We could even do better for our students. So Advocacy Day is April 25, and I look forward to being there and engaging with our legislators. Anything else PSBA-related from my colleagues, Vice President Fields or Mr. Desnoy—Director Desnoy? Okay. Okay? Policy liaison?
It's going to be a pretty busy spring and early summer in terms of policy, so look for Board discussions and a number of things to vote on. Thank you.
Thank you. For Communications, Director— For Communications Directors, Dr. Haig and Director Mitchell do a great job with the newsletter, so I'd like to turn it over to you to talk about communication.
Not much new to add, that we continue to send the updates with great help from Ms. Buford, and that we're trying to summarize the highlights because we know not everyone has the time to sit through all of these meetings each month, but so we hope people appreciate those summaries.
Yes, I think you guys do a great job of capturing the things that people most likely will care about, so thank you, and thank you, Ms. Buford, for helping out with that. Is there any old business from board members? Director Worsavich.
Yeah, just a little blurb. A lot of community members, as well as various board members, had taken part in various speak-up events in the district over the last few weeks. Myself, President Brown, and Director Desnoyers in particular, went to the one at Beverly Hills Middle School that was absolutely extremely impactful. And when we're talking about different ways that we can cultivate, you know, better relationships with each other in the community to head off potentially worse manifestations of anger, hurt, and that sort of thing, students and teachers get together and have these speak-up events, and they allow them, allows these students to have safe spaces to unload their emotions, so to speak, to people and authority figures that actually have an invested interest in their well-being. And the room that I was in was homophobia, and that's a really, really heavy thing because unfortunately, we're still dealing with a world that doesn't want to fully, wholly embrace every child as they were born. They put a lot of preconditions on that love, and in that room that evening, all I heard from our students and the very supportive teachers and administration, and I'm not just saying that because I've been here for a while, I've seen it all, these people actually care, and these kids want love and understanding. They demand it not only from their school community, but from the boroughs and the townships that this district serves. The school can't be the source of everything and all be all. We need the communities buy-in for that, and that's exactly what came in from these students. So I'm here as a representative of the board, and I think that they all would agree with me in saying that we need to keep on doing everything that we possibly can to stick up for all students, but most especially those who feel that they are marginalized just simply based upon their sexual or gender expression or identity. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Worsavich, for pointing that out. That was a powerful night. I was in the bullying room, and I was impressed with the students' courage, their eloquence, and their ability to share their stories. So it was really a powerful night. Speak-Up does a great job, and I think our students and staff have embraced the concept, so I'm sure we'll keep that going. Right, Dr. McGarry?
Yes, again, I want to acknowledge Dr. Manfree and Ms. Simone and Dr. Youson and Dr. Alloway for pushing that initiative forward. When we visited this at a local school district prior to bringing it here, it was, there's a lot of heavy conversations that take place. I think the other part of that that's important is that we're educating in the rooms that parents go into, they will not be in a room with their own child. So they're getting educated by our youth on the concerns that our kids are facing. So that's a powerful part, adults hearing from other students, which I think is a key part of what Board Member Worsavich shared. But again, the administration who brings these initiatives forward deserve a lot of credit for that.
Thank you. Is there any other old business from board members? Okay, moving on. Is there any new business from board members? We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will call in Upper Darby residents who signed in to address the board in the order in which they signed in, followed by emailed and phoned comments. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address, and present your comments in the three-minute time limit. In accordance with Policy 903, the time allotted for general comments, both in-person and submitted comments, will not exceed one hour. So we'll start with the signed in, and I think Ms. Lee Jordan.
Lee Jordan, 90 Pilgrim Lane, Drexel Hill. Just some comments and maybe suggestions on the recruiting efforts that are taking place in the school district. I know we have great in-house programs. We have educator rising, and then we have the professional field experience, but I'm not sure where the follow-through happens. And just speaking from personal experience, my daughter Sarah is a senior this year at Penn State, went through all these programs, but, you know, she hasn't been contacted by the district. Now, I know it can be difficult. I mean, and we have a couple of years probably of children in these programs, and we don't know where they live and what their addresses are, but we do know the addresses on record when they were in the district. So I think an outreach, like sending a letter to these students and saying, you know, where are you in your life, or, you know, are you graduating, or we would love to chat with you, you know, can we meet up? So maybe out of the 25 students that are in educator rising, you might reach out to two, but in my mind, that's a win-win. It's just a letter, and I know we have these great programs, so I think that's something to think about. And also, job fairs. So I'm not sure what job fairs the district attends. I know they're not at Penn State, and I know they weren't at Millersville. Maybe they're at local campuses, but I think it's really important to get out there. I know it's a staffing issue, and I know you have to pick and choose, but you have to get in front of these students who don't know this district and talk about how great it is. Show like what you show in the beginning of these meetings. I mean, just those videos just warm your heart, and I don't know, I can't imagine who wouldn't want to be part of the district. I know money talks. I know that's a big part of it, but we have so much more to offer. So just some, you know, suggestions out there, and I think, you know, even just sending those letters out, or even talking to, like, I recognize somebody who graduated with Lauren teaching at Hillcrest. I mean, like, going through the network that you currently have, to do these simple little things mean a lot to people, to think that, you know, you care if you get a letter, you didn't forget about me. I mean, it's just something to think about, because I know Upper Darby, along with every district, is really struggling with the teacher crisis. So just some of my thoughts.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's all the speakers who signed in to speak. Ms. Buford, how about online?
Yes, sir. There are a few comments that we received. The first comment is from Alona Shabani, located at 290 Childs Avenue in Drexel Hill. The comment was received on the 5th at 10:50 a.m. via email, general comment, and it begins, "Since buses got taken away, there is 10 times more trash than before. Bullying and harassment went up. Kids now walk longer distances and have to bully other kids more than they did before while on buses. I have personally seen more than once kids bully others as they are walking home. Theft and crime went up. Teenagers are going around taking things because items are more accessible now that they walk. This theft increase isn't just my opinion. It has happened to me personally more than once and many people around my neighborhood. These actions were also caught on camera. Is it still an ongoing issue?" It is still an ongoing issue, and it is happening more often. By taking buses away, you're leaving our kids wide open to child sex trafficking. Predators are now checking out every kid since there are many more walking and walking longer distances. They are studying the routes and learning our children's walking paths. We have had incidents in my neighborhood of kids being followed by suspicious cars. Recently, kids from the surrounding Catholic schools have reported being followed and asked for a ride. It happened to two different Catholic school students within a few days, and it was the same car. Taking away transportation is endangering our kids' safety. You're basically putting our kids up for sale to these predators. We, as parents, will never be at ease knowing our kids are walking home alone for a long time, and at any moment, their lives can be endangered. We don't have the luxury of a flexible work schedule. We all need to come up with better solutions for transportation. We can't just let our kids be wide open to dangerous situations. We need to protect them. I know that there are safe walking routes. It is not enough. Predators know these routes as well, and our kids are the pawns. Please help the kids and bring back buses." End of comment. Our next comment is from Sahida Mayfield, located at 249 LaCara Drive in Lansdowne. This comment was received on the 5th at 7:21 p.m. via email, and it is a general comment. The comment begins, "I no longer feel the UD school district is diverse. Let's..." I think she means be real. "Let's be real. They are mostly black, and the majority of the teachers and administrators are white. This is becoming an issue because these teachers and staff need culturally responsive training. I've been dealing with the UD school district for 25 years. Four of my adult daughters have graduated from UD. My one daughter is graduating a year early. She is in 11th grade, and she is an honor roll student. My youngest 14-year-old and an eighth grader who have struggled through the pandemic academically and emotionally. She was failing all of her classes, cutting classes, and was often late to classes. She is now an honor roll student. I do not feel her teachers care or support her. One of her teachers accused her of bullying them. I am outraged, and that is a very serious accusation. I am going to investigate this further. I did not raise my daughter to be a bully, and I do not believe she is bullying a teacher. Accountability is important to be a teacher because I am an educator myself. Black and brown students need protection and support, and sometimes from their own teachers. I would like to form a black student support group for parents and students. Please get training for the teachers of UD. Everyone needs to stop ignoring what is going on in our school district. I know what is going on, and it is being ignored. Black students are being targeted. Something needs to be done about it. I plan to personally do something about it," I think she means, "because I advocate for all students, especially black students. I advocate for equity and social justice, and I will not stop until it is implemented in our school district." End of comment. The next comment is from Seven Jellosian, located at 1144 Myrtlewood Avenue. The comment was received on the 4th at 7:30 p.m. via email, and it is a general comment. The comment begins, "I have a few topics for public comments. It has come to my attention that in 2021, the district failed to post Easter or Passover messages on social media. Now that we are seeing posts celebrating other religious holidays, I would hope that Easter and Passover are not missed this year. For all families who believe the mental health support program conducted by CGRC, Child Guidance Resource Centers, is mandatory, it is not. The same evil architects of destruction, the federal PA Department of Education, Education Secretary Cardona, Ortega, the IU, and evil unions, N. Wolf, who kept schools closed, masked children, and called parents who constitutionally voiced their concerns and peacefully assembled domestic terrorists, now have the audacity to send the same dirty COVID esker monies to fix what they created. UDSD has failed to inform you that you have the option to opt out of this program. Exercise your right. Teachers, support staff, and custodians, if you feel coerced or bullied into staying with your union, you have a choice as well. Find the group name, Union Choice, for PA educators on Facebook for more information. The last in-person student and teacher class picture was taken in March 2020 by Barksdale Studios. The 2022 spring pictures, the class picture, is a composite. Who is responsible for this decision, the district or Barksdale? Regardless, my child is no longer participating in your pathetic COVID theater. Class pictures should be in-person. Any student who does not wish to be part of the class picture can be digitally added. You can continue to live in fear, but my child will not be excluded from an experience. Thank you. Have a great evening." End of comment. And that concludes our comments for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Buford. Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
A motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.[1772.61][1772.61][music]